The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
You're looking at it? Probably not. Definitely not. I'll probably guess. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes. So please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. This case is a public hearing. It would be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public, to public input, excuse me, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed at that point. Michelle, if you would introduce our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1308-1. Upon the matter of request by I Square LLC, Mike Nolan, for preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of Phase 2 of Building 2, which includes a one-story building which houses a mechanical room/pump station and the construction of a stage with related site improvements on premises 633, 651, 667, 687, and 691 Titus Avenue, 3411, 1220, and 28 Union Park, 5 and 11 Stranahan Park, and tax account numbers 076.15-6-12 and 076.15-6-23 in a mixed-use commercial district.
Mike Nolan, 350 Kings Highway North. I'm here tonight to hopefully obtain site approval, final approval, for our Phase 2A of the I Square Development. Phase 2A came into play earlier as it's originally intended for next spring due we have a rainwater collection system that as we build each building, we'll be gathering the rainwater, storing it, and pumping it back out in an irrigation format. The Building 1, as soon as we put the roof on it, that water is channeled in that direction so as we come up to it. So that pulled it up to this year, the need to do this. And so we, following the workshop, we nailed down a few of the questions that came up as far as building materials, the block, the stage, and canopy material, and came to conclusions on all those things, and brought some samples with us tonight.
Great. Why don't you show us your samples?
Okay. We're going to build the building. These are called CMU. It's a split face cinder block and comes installation already. And as much as we build it, the back three, the three sides will be built to that so it becomes a finished product as we put in the framing. The under grade portions of that would be traditional straight cinder block, and that would be the portion above grade. The backstage or behind the musicians will be an IFIS surface, which is a painted, regular painted colored surface. And the canopy material. We selected a Sombrella product for Tri-Vantage and a company called Premier Signs in Rochester, actually just down the road from our machine shop, sells and carries it and said this is the very best product for our environment for a year-round canopy, and they're very comfortable with it out there 12 months a year, which is something that was important to us.
Which color? I think it's called over the drawing.
We're leaning toward the slate, but there's like a wallpaper book that has a million just very ever so slight shade changes, but something in the slate color range, in dark gray.
Is that one right there a slate or?
Can you help me with that part? Which one we? They got sticky notes all over the, and right here. It's a charcoal form of color.
That'll be nice.
And that's it. I think we cleaned up. I think the only thing I did notice on the drawing, it still says that drained to daylight under the sump, but really pumped to daylight. I think that was a drawing note that Greg had made, and I know it's still on the drawing, but everything else has been addressed and is included in those.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to questions from the board. Jay?
Mr. Nolan, can you just sort of describe what's going to happen with the rainwater as it, it's all gonna, it's all pitched to underground drains and it's going to then be pumped out? Can you describe a little bit about where it's going to go and what it's going to do?
Certainly. First, we're just collecting roof water with this system, so it stays till clean versus picking up water from the roads or sidewalks or ground-level drains. But the roof drains, which are all internal in all seven buildings, will each lead to a secondary storm sewer system. That storm sewer system where these lead to goes into three underground storage tanks. Each one holds about 2,400 gallons of water, and throughout the year, we'll be pumping that water back out and allowing it to leach into the land rather than going down our traditional storm sewer system. Purpose behind it is the, our storm system at I Squares is near the southern end of a storm route that goes directly to Duran Beach, same beach which was closed 50% of the time due to high bacteria levels. When you have a large parking area, and especially we're on a southern portion, that we're building up a big headstrong of water heading down through the system that picks up bacterias and other contaminants along the way and carries them out into Lake Ontario. It's a, it's a very purposeful system, and we are on an entire bed of sand. As far down as we dig, we have nothing but sand. Our property can take all the water that lands on it and certainly absorb it right on the site without the need to add to a problem.
All right. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Rich?
Just briefly, we covered it at the workshop, but for the benefit of everybody watching, three sides of this building, the west, south, and east, are all going to be encompassed by the building that you're going to build later on. So the facade material we're talking about is going to be enclosed fully within the footprint of a new building, correct?
Correct. The three sides, the back and two-side walls of the stage will ultimately be encompassed in a U-shaped building that will house apartments, Building 2, on our site plan. The purpose for putting the more decorative stone on is that, like a lot of city buildings do, is that will be used for an interior wall in that new building potentially and show that. And so we didn't want to do just a straight cinder block there, even though it ultimately kind of burying it.
I appreciate you doing that for the sake of the year, or year and a half, or whatever it takes before you have that building done.
Yeah, we like it better. Otherwise, it would look like the stair towers that we've had out there for the last couple of months. I can't wait to bury them in the rest of the building.
The other thing is the north elevation that we have the plans for now, that's the final plan, and that will be visible the way it is for many years to come, correct?
Correct, correct. The corners are coined, so it'll look jagged, and the IFIS, which is a foam-backed product, which we think is better for the sound projection, will be inlaid within that. And we'll also vary the surface just a little bit. I'm told by music people that to vary that back surface will help me in the way that sound comes out of there.
Okay. Lastly, the roof of the stage, there were some discussions about some different materials and some different colors. Where did you go with that?
We ended up with this Sombrella product. The supporting portions of it, or the columns, will be a metal framing, heavy-duty, so that they could attach lights or different equipment to it during the event. But it will be in a arched shape, canopy shape, going across the stage. And we have a rendering. The last page in your packet is a rendering that we started. Steve Tackich and Aron DeCort resident, and I call him an architist, he can do anything on drying, and he drew up a rendering that looks like this, and this would show the canopy with this being a heavy material portion from Sombrella.
Thank you.
Ray?
Good evening, Mr. Nolan. I'm sorry I missed you at the workshop. I have one question for you, and maybe I'm mistaken, and maybe there's a mistake here on the EAF. I'm looking at item 10 on the short form EAF.
Okay.
And it says, "Does action involve a permit approval or funding now or ultimately from any other governmental agency, federal, state, or local?" You said no, and I believe you got a pilot. Is that, and I'm not sure, does that, is it a mistake? Is it something that we just moved the checkbox over? I'm just curious.
Larry, maybe you could weigh in on that. I don't.
I'm not sure, and I want to make sure we're in compliance, Larry.
Okay. I guess I'll let, Dan Orelli can jump in here, too. Mike fills out the first page. Does the action, which is this Phase 2B, involve a permit approval or funding now or ultimately from any other agency besides the planning board? That's what the question's being asked. So I guess if you are getting some funding, I don't know of any other, well, you will need a permit from the Health Department.
Right.
So the answer to that is yes. You will need a permit from the Health Department for the filtration system. So there's an easy yes right there. And are you getting any funding that you're aware of from New York State or EPA or anybody like that?
Yes. Yeah, so that should be a yes, Ray.
So just a mistake. So what I would like to do is make sure that we're, you're okay, in compliance?
Yes. Absolutely should be a yes based on the, hearing that question again and knowing that I have to go to Building Department for a permit, and I am, there is some state funding involved in the storm collection system, so I think it's yes on a number of accounts.
Good, perfect. I just want to make sure that we're.
Good, thank you.
I'll weigh in.
Mm-hmm.
And again, how, my opinion on this, I always tell you, is, or my advice is intended as objective legal advice. I don't take a position on the outcome. But I recall that during the application process, you were uncertain at one, at that stage, what the funding components would be.
Right.
In fact, I think we're at a phased development for no other reason, so you could individually fund. I remember that also. You know, in that box on line 10, it's my opinion that by changing that from a no to a yes, it doesn't change any negative environmental outcome, which is the purpose. I know, and it's the purpose of the document. So I think if you revisit the history of the application, how it's developed in a process, which is really why we're here tonight, I would simply, it would be my advice to the board to change the box from a no to a yes, and it has no outcome on the environmental quality.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we're, that's all.
Good question.
Right. While we're, while we're on there, question number 11, "Does any aspect of the action have a current valid permit or approval?" And I suppose you could say yes to that because you wouldn't be building this if you didn't have a roof that was going to be producing storm water. So, you know, the, are you referring back to the original? No, I'm referring to the short form he submitted. That's all. Ray asked the question, "Is there any funding?"
The stage is 729.
Yeah, that was the original that was submitted with the application, original short form.
I think that would be a yes, though, right, Larry? Because I do have site approval, preliminary site approvals, Building 1, building approval, and a number of them in place.
And again, the front page basically is just information about the project, that it's a 1,200-square-foot masonry building, and it's going to affect a tenth of an acre. It does comply with zoning. It's in a commercial zone. So we're just kind of getting a few other things sorted out here. And as a result of this action tonight, your existing building permit is not going to require a modification.
Bernie?
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes, thank you. And thank you.
Well, we're going to, we're going to capture all the changes, you're going to amend the.
Right, right.
We're, well, we can talk about that in a minute. Bernie?
Sure. Mr. Nolan, I think we talked about it at the workshop, but this building's going to go up by the end of the year.
Correct.
You plan on using it next year, even though the other building won't be up?
Correct.
And so that grassy area will be also finished?
Yeah, we're going to seed for now to keep the dust level down. Figure that's our most inexpensive way of managing it, and we'll still have some storage there for construction materials and what will be the future parking for that building. But we intend on grassing it in to get a more finished look to the whole development.
And what is your plans as far as when you think you'll start using it?
The stage is, as soon as the weather breaks next spring.
Okay. So what would the, and I forgot from the plans, what would the parking look like at that point in time?
The parking at that point will be the same as it is in the rest of Phase 1. We're not adding, in Phase 2A, won't add any additional parking. I'll just add that grassy area, which, so it won't change anything from what we have on the original Phase 1 parking area, which will be almost at capacity. All our parallel parking on both roads will be in place. The center lot will be in place, and the lot behind Building 1 will be fully in place, and all paved, striped, ready to go.
Okay. So all the street and then that center lot that's on the side of House of Guitars will be there?
Yes. Yep, they'll be completed in a few weeks.
That was the only questions I had.
Michael?
No, I mean, good, thank you. I thought you were handing me something.
I thought we were just going to kumbaya or something here. The only question that I really had was, are we, are you looking to get 2, Phase 2, or 2A, or both?
2A.
2A, that's what I thought.
2A for final, and it was just to give an insight of what the remainder of 2 held, but I will apply, we'll come in for that separately.
And just, we had you do the short form environmental assessment form, but I'm not, we're not redoing Seeker, which an environmental assessment's requirement of Seeker, so even though that form was completed, I think it's just, it's a good review of any, but we're not revisiting Seeker. Seeker's closed on your project, so.
Okay.
I mean, we could talk about the amendments to your form, but I don't know that it has anything germane to the application. Also, I wanted to thank you for the completeness of your application and the response to our input. I really like the IFIS thing I changed on the backside. I like the materials and your thoughtfulness to our input was very appreciated.
Thank you. It's my.
At this time point, I would like to open it up to the audience to, if there's any input from them, we may do, accept that at this point.
Good evening. I'm Ann Burns from 199 Bellhurst Drive, here to represent Helping Aron DeCort Plan for Progress. And we've been involved in the design, and the Nolans have been gracious enough to show us what they've been thinking of all along, and we wanted to express publicly that we appreciate the thought that's been put into the materials for this, including the decorative block, the IFIS, the Sombrella over the stage, as well the reuse of the natural resources and the phasing of this project, because a pump house is needed, but it becomes a stage with a pump house until the building can be built. So we appreciate the, just the depth of thought that has gone into this, and the fact that this will be a worthwhile space for community gathering going forward next year.
Anyone else from the audience? No? Okay. Closed public input at this point. I mean, I would agree also that, you know, many people would try to find a way to do this, you know. I think doing it in advance certainly shows a lot of forethought. I think it's going to be an excellent amenity, getting that amenity on-site early. Should benefit the community, in my opinion. At this point, is there any other questions from the board? Like I said before, there's my Seeker. We are not doing Seeker.
Listen, everyone, that we got here, testing it, which, I like, it just says it's a continuation of.
Correct. I think if there's any deviations, then we got to look, but you're not really, in my opinion, I mean, maybe it was half round, now it's square. Those aren't real deviations to me. So we are not doing Seeker. I believe we are ready to make final, preliminary and final, I suppose that's redundant, but I don't know that there are really any conditions, I mean, that note, I don't, I think that's an engineering note that's not really a planning board notes. Did anyone else have any conditions up there?
No, I would like to see, you know, that the forms are corrected, that's all. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that Seeker is not an issue. I think it was just a mistake, or perhaps an oversight.
I would suggest that the form be corrected by staff. It's been vetted, it's been vetted at the board, and it's, the explanation is clear and unequivocal.
Someone want to make a motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Upon the matter of PB 1308-1, upon the request by I Square LLC, Mike Nolan, for preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of Phase 1 of Building 2, which includes a one-story building which houses a mechanical pump station and the construction of a stage with related site improvements on premises 633, 651, 667, 687, and 691 Titus Avenue, 3411, 12, and 28 Union Park, 5 and 11 Stranahan Park, and tax account numbers 076.15-6-12 and 076.15-6-23 in a mixed-use commercial district, MUC. I move approval.
We have a second? Rich, you look like you wanted to, you might have read that. I don't know, I thought you was Phase.
I left out number 20, excuse me. Titus Avenue number 20.
So Union Park 20. 20, 20 Union Park.
20 Union Park, excuse me.
It was a lot.
Sorry.
All those.
Who seconded?
Michael.
Oh, Michael Plermo seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Thank you for continuing to invest in Aron DeCort.
I think if you don't say anything, it's fine.
Your motion duty's over, taken away.
I'm slammed.
He's going to make a cussler. I'll get in trouble.
Michelle, if you'd like to introduce the next case?
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1308-2. Upon the matter of request by the Ukrainian Christian Pentecostal Church for revised site plan approval to convert 3,600 square feet of existing grassy pavers parking into asphalt parking on premises 36 Carlin Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. My name's Louis Carini. I'm a professional engineer representing the church. The church wants to convert 3,600 square feet of grass pavers into regular asphalt pavement. We feel that this is a neater surface for people parking in that area. I had assumed that we could pitch this new surface toward the existing remaining grass pavers and that it would be able to absorb the surface water. I had no way to prove that this could happen, so the town engineer suggested a dry well. And I contacted, we were in touch this week, and we agreed on an eight-foot diameter concrete tank six foot deep, which has a volume of 300 cubic feet. Now we are sure that the water will be controlled instead of maybe. We appreciate approval of this work tonight because we wish to do the work this fall.
Questions on board, and start with Bernie this time?
No questions. No, right.
I don't either. Ray?
I don't either. Larry, the only thing I would ask is that you explain the note that you just handed to us for a matter of public record.
Well, we have 3,600 square feet of surface, which is slightly under a tenth of an acre. I think it's .08 acres. And went with a five-year storm event, so we're not oversizing it. With a time of concentration of five minutes, which means when it starts to rain, 100% of the surface will be going to the dry well in five minutes because it's such a short little run. And that is an intensity of 4.85 inches per hour, so if you think about 15 minutes being a quarter of an hour, that's 1.2 inches of rain falling in that timeframe. If you assume the storm's going to last 15 minutes at that intensity, you have 900 seconds, and there's a calculation of how many cubic feet per second you're going to have, and over 900 seconds, you're going to need 300 cubic feet of storage. And just like LA Fitness, there's water going into the reservoir or the dry well, but there's also water leaving it during the rain event. So you give some credit, and you wind up with, I think, 50 cubic feet per foot in an eight-foot manhole dry well. So 50 times 6 is 300 cubic feet. And then you all, and that's not even counting the stone that's going to be around it, which also will have voids to take up the water.
So now that you've explained that, Mr. Engineer, in layman's terms, do you feel that that's an appropriate?
Uh, yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Anything else, Ray?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rich?
Not so much a question, but just a comment, although we don't, I don't think we usually like adding impervious surface when you've already done a nice job with the pavers and a somewhat pervious surface. I think in this situation, based upon your stated reasons for wanting to change it, I think those are good reasons, and I.
Thank you.
I understand why you want to do it.
Thank you.
Jay?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Can you describe the makeup of the dry well?
Yes. It's made by Lakeland Concrete. It has approximately a six-inch thickness wall, and it's, like I said, eight-foot diameter, and it has a concrete cover that's designed to carry heavy trucks. I'm not sure if this one has an eight-inch cover or 12-inch cover, reinforced steel, and in the middle, it has a grate, for a cast iron grate. So does that answer your question?
So that's going to drop down around the sides of the hole, and then is there going to be stone in the bottom of the hole, or what's going to be in the bottom of the hole?
I was.
Is there going to be anything along the sides of the hole?
Typically, the, let's call it a manhole, is bedded on stone so that it's not rocking. It's bedded on stone, and you've had to excavate further to drop it in the hole, and then they would put some Mirafai filter fabric along the edge, pin it back, and then backfill around the concrete with stone so it's held in there, and that stone has a void ratio of probably 25%. And then the, the dry well, as Lou said, is manufactured, they standard by either Kistner or Lakeland's. Lakeland's is an. or Lakeland's, Lakeland's is an Avon, and it's got all kinds of holes, so it looks like Swiss cheese. And you don't put anything in the dry well itself, because that would take away storage volume. And so when the water goes in, it's gonna go out the holes, go through the stone, hit the Murify filter fabric, and percolate into the side walls of the excavation.
Keep talking.
And also percolate down.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
I have no questions, but I do appreciate you, your consideration of the dry well. Questions from the audience? Seeing no input from the audience, we'll close the public input portion. Yeah. Believe for seeker, we're looking at an unlisted neg deck on this. I.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. PB 1308-02, on the matter of seeker, I move, it's an unlisted action, negative declaration.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Now look to final site plan approval.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I don't believe we have any conditions.
No. Nope. I move approval of PB 1308-2, upon the matter of request by the Ukrainian Christian Pentecostal Church for revise, revised site plan approval to convert 3,600 square feet of existing parking grassy pavers to asphalt park, asphalt parking on premises 36 Carlin Drive in an R1 residential district. I would move approval.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for investing in around the court.
I think it is rare that we have had findings without conditions.
Without conditions, yeah.
That's just showing the excellence of our process.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1308-3, upon the matter of request by Darlene Brewster for preliminary and final site plan approval to convert the existing building into an upscale wine and liquor store with related site improvements on premises 4441 Culver Road in a C commercial district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Brewster, and I'm here for final approval for the site plan for conversion of 4414, 44, 40, 40, I'm sorry, 4441 Culver Road to an upscale wine and liquor store.
There were some questions put forth at the workshop. We, we resolve all those, are we good with that?
Would you like me to go through my memo? Hey, Larry, why don't you address your memo?
Um, I think, I think the memo addresses the things that were at the workshop.
Yep.
Um, last week I went up, there was some question of whether there really were existing lights on the building, and there are, and they appear to be metal haloid, as noted on the drawing. You saw the photometrics for the new lights, the ELT1s, which are actually an LED light. And based on those photometrics, I'm recommending that you just replace the other lights, because your LEDs are only $100 a piece. And the two existing lights are gonna burn a lot more power than that, and I have a feeling that they probably don't meet our code for light spread. So I'm making that recommendation. The other thing is that the new light by the back door is close to the property line, and that will shed light over the line. So I would just have that mounted to the other side, or use a smaller fixture, if all you're trying to do is see the lock in the door. If you're trying to light a little bit more of the parking lot, then just move the light to the other side of the door, so it's further from the property line. Greg Goder pointed out that the handicapped ramp was about 26, um, the ramp was 26 inches high at the landing by the door, which means the ramp needs to be about 26 feet long, not about, but does need to be, and that would actually bring it out right to the edge of the planting bed, so it's not coming out into the drive lane, there is enough distance to get it to one-on-12 ADA compliant slope. Darlene, I apologize for this, because a suggestion was made, and you don't have to change the drawing, but there was a suggestion made by the board chairman, that maybe if the striped part of the handicapped was moved over to the backside to space four, since that is really just for getting in and out of a car, that most drivers who are using the back would then be parked near the ramp, and when they backed up and K-turned, they would have a little bit more maneuvering room. So it doesn't really change anything, just how you stripe it. And then lastly, you did change from the cobbles or the mulch out by the street, and I had experience with, you know, sea green ground junipers, and I think you would be better served, and obviously looking for board input, I think you'd be better served with just a grass lawn and a flowering crab apple out there, because the, the junipers are gonna get woody at some point. So your, your little, your little tree'll be good for 50 years, if not more.
Thank you for the recommendations. Just a couple of comments, the lights, the existing lights, the two that are there match the bait shop, so I would kinda would like to stay with that, and I'm fine with putting a smaller light near the door and wherever you want to put it. And as far as the landscaping, there's a lot of landscaping around that building already. There's a lot of large pine trees near the, where the, the hair salon is, next door. So I'm worried about any more things that will block visibility to the wine store. So I don't want to put anything that's gonna like create height, and people won't be able to see what's in there and what's happening in there, or, so I'd prefer to stick with the junipers.
Larry, would you? We need landscaping at the road other than the grass?
It, would, would you be comfortable with, with just the grass?
That, that's fine.
Just the grass and, and no, nook tree?
Right. That's fine.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I did notice the, there's a spruce just to the north of you with quite a bit of understory plantings, and to the south of you is a grove of black walnuts.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Nice, Jay.
Jay, we'll start with questions from you.
If you're gonna keep the lights the way that they are now, and not go to an LED or a different light, do we, are we expecting, it seems like a, a small item, but it's all about the light spilling onto the next, onto the properties, and that it's not supposed to spill any place except for on your own. I believe the, it can't be above, I think it's half a foot candle. And if you, if you go with the metal halides without any kind of guarding around it, then it's gonna, it's gonna violate that, I'm pretty sure. So we're gonna need to figure out how you're gonna put the lighting in, leave it the way it is, and actually have it meet code, so I don't know exactly how to do that.
The lighting that's there is, that is the same, that's where the, the bait shop is, on that side. So right next door is a large parking lot, and then the bait store with a light. Those lights have been there since probably the dentist has been there.
Doesn't matter, it's still, you, you need to, they need to, it needs to meet code. I don't know if it met code before or not, that doesn't really matter.
These lights were installed pre, pre-lighting code?
Yeah. So the, the conventional wisdom, and again, this is just my observation, I'm not taking a position with regard to it, conventional wisdom would be that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and they would be permitted to keep it even though it violates the current code. The exception to the pre-existing non-conforming use is always the public health, safety, and welfare. So I would submit to the board, again, that if you have a recommendation from the town staff, that the lighting could, could create any, any kind of a problem that the, that the statute was intended to alleviate, then that would take precedence over the pre-existing non-conforming use.
If, if you really chose to stay with what you've got now, because we do say pre-existing, come time for a change, you'd have to meet the new, new standard.
That would be fine.
So I, I think you.
I would like to probably stay.
You could pay now or pay then.
Uh-huh. I would like to stay with the way it is.
So Jay, I have a question for you. Did you think that caused a safety problem, or just a code violation?
I think it's a code violation. And we don't know if it was, we say it's pre-existing non-conforming, but we don't know if it was non-conforming.
I mean, I don't want to diminish your, you know, your financial investment in here, but we're talking about $100 light fixture?
Mm-hmm.
And whether or not you get approval for your use?
Well, if, you know, that's the case, then I'm happy to switch it out. So you want me to put the, the four that, or the, the one that I sent there, where the two existing are? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yes. Right.
Sure.
Thank you.
Rich, would you, do you have any other questions?
I, I had, I'm sorry, I have one more, Mr. Chairman. All right. Sorry about that. If, if we change, if we, and this is more for you, Mr. Chairman, than for the applicant, if we take out the, if we switch around where the, the stripes are gonna be for the, for the parking, for the handicap parking, are you, or are you concerned that the way that the thing's gonna line up is that the, you, someone can potentially hit that, the, the corner of the ramp then? Because as it is now, that isn't a parking area, that there's a, that's where the striping is, so it's sort of, that, the side of the building's sort of protected. I understand why you'd want to have it the other way around, to give people more room to get out, and that makes sense, but how can, can you line it, is there any way to line up the, line it up so that you don't, you, you kinda make sure that you don't, somebody doesn't hit the side of the, the, the top of the ramp there, the landing? Maybe it's not necessary, I'm just concerned that someone's gonna whack your landing, and a lot of times you'd want to put a bollard in front of that, but there really isn't any room for that.
Again, it was just a suggestion.
I mean, at the end, you're talking about it's gonna be level with the ground. It won't be until you get much further up the ramp that there's actually gonna be any real height differential?
Well, here's the, this is the area I'm concerned, as you're pulling in, right now it's blocked with the, right now it's blocked from anything hitting it, because of this is the striped area. But if this is the striped area over here, that means the car's gonna be pulling in here, I'm just concerned, because that's the height of the ramp there.
There are also instances in the handicap accessibility code where ramp that's one to 10 is allowed. Is this existing ramp one to 10?
Here's the ramp here.
Um, I would say it's more like one to eight.
Parking spot's gonna be here, and you're gonna whack that.
Because it's about half. Are we suggesting that we're making them repair, replace the ramp?
I, I think under the code, given the, the changes to the building, that the ramp would need to be reramped. Because the building permit's gonna be issued for the work being done.
Right. Okay.
Just, just getting back to Jay's comment, I, I think the curb stop placement on the new parking spot where the striping is now, and maintaining that curb stop in the right spot is gonna be important, or else he's right, people are gonna be bumping into your stairs.
Well, that's the way she has it shown, and I, I think that that could be field judgment. I don't know that it germanely changes the application.
It, it doesn't, I just, I've seen curb stops get moved by plows, and it's just a warning that if you don't maintain it in the right spot, you could have problems with.
274A gives you, when you're doing your final site, or your, your final approval for, to site plan, parking is obviously a consideration, but you can defer the final analysis to staff. Should we just make that a condition, then, that the? Subject to approval of the staff, when they issue the building permit. Yeah. And it's really just whatever works best, it's done. It shouldn't, it's not really anything that besides.
Yeah, I don't even know that we need to make it a condition, but.
No, I don't.
What? Well, no, there's one, but, I mean, there's a couple, but I don't know if changing the parking strip is.
Okay, Peter, if you go with the one on 10, you are 22 feet, which is at least four feet tucked into the building with the end of the ramp. So it's.
Obviously not the architect of record, but there are instances in their code where one to 10 is, it's just some, so we're saying that the ramp is not compliant. I think it's a building code issue, it's already shown on the site plan, I think that that's just something that needs to be worked out with the building code. Ray?
Um, just one thing, and I'm, I'm gonna go back, Ms. Brewster, to the EIA. Just curious, on 10, and I don't know, do you need a liquor license to sell alcohol?
Yes.
It's not listed as such. And that, I'm assuming that that would be a permit from another governmental agency?
New York State, yes.
Just to be, it's a matter of completeness, not to, to work the project out, but just to add that in. And as a result of the proposed action, will existing permit approval require modification? I'm assuming if you need another permit, that's a modification. And I'm thinking that might have just been an oversight or a mistake.
I'm sorry, are you looking at the, the drawing?
The short environmental assessment form?
Oh, I, I don't have that, I don't have a copy of that on me.
Here, let me, Jay's got it.
That could be the same as the one.
I don't know that there's any existing.
No, I'm just looking at it, because I don't want, I just want to be in compliance for everybody.
You know how to find it.
I don't know that there's any existing permits or approvals that would require modification.
Pete, the only reason I'm asking is, and I could be wrong, is if it would be required, wouldn't that be a modification?
Well.
I'm just thinking of.
I'm thinking that, that's more like if you had a phased approval, like, you know, you're already at a supermarket, and you're putting in a new parkings.
Okay, again, I'm just.
Yeah, I think this is a whole new.
To help, to help everybody to be in total compliance, and.
I mean, to me, this is a whole new action, so there's no action in place that you're modifying. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep. Don't, again, I'm just asking.
Think your answer. No, I agree. I don't, and I think so, I agree with your liquor license comment, that's a good one, but I don't know that there's any existing permit or approval that's in place at this point, because it's basically a new use.
All right. Larry, are you in agreement with that, just out of curiosity?
Yes. Yes.
I'm gonna go to Michael next, if you know.
Michael's good.
Bernie?
Bernie's good.
Seeing no more input from the board, we'd like to open it up to the input from the public.
Hi, I'm Pam Nichols, I live at 4440 Culver Road, which is right across the street from the site of the liquor store. I'm here to express my concerns. I've lived there for 25 years. And in that 25 years, it's just been a dentist, who's only been open till four o'clock or five o'clock at night, and the last one, which was a silk screening business, which they were very quiet, there wasn't much traffic. I'm concerned about the hours that this is gonna be open, the clientele, and the traffic, obviously. The lighting is a whole new thing that you brought up, that I'm afraid of, too, it's gonna shine across the street right at me. I don't have any, any other information, I just found out about this, I was out of town. So I'd just like some of my concerns addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Wait, let's get the, oh, you're gonna ask a question? Yes, you may ask a question.
Do the current lights shine?
Wait, hold on, she has to come back up to the podium.
Oh, sorry.
Right now, they turn the lights off, because there's no business there.
Oh, so you don't know what it looks like at night?
No. It's dark. When it was a dentist office, they left the lights off as well because they weren't there.
So you would be in favor that they changed the lights to whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay. That was it.
Any other input from the public? Seeing none, you may come back up. Can you address maybe the hours operation and?
Um, right now, it's planning from 10 to nine, Monday through six days a week. I haven't quite figured out my days.
Closed Sunday?
Probably closed Sunday earlier.
Wait, okay, so it's open seven days a week, but the hours are different on Sunday?
Right.
So you're open seven days a week or six days a week?
Um, you know, I haven't decided completely yet, but I think I'll go with the seven days a week, but definitely probably until five on Sunday.
Larry, this is permitted as a right in this district, correct?
Yes.
Well, I can appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but I think the most that we can influence is your lighting, which you've already agreed to modify.
Can I ask a question?
Are you planning on leaving the lights on 24/7, or are you going to be turning them off when you close?
Um, I probably was going to leave them on. I think it's good for security and just visibility. And I actually am around that area often myself. I'm familiar with the building across the street. And when Kevin was there with the print screenshot, those lights were on and the existing lights were on, and they don't really, they make it look nice. They just shine a light on it and kind of give it a little light to the neighborhood. It's a busy street, a commercial street, and you kind of have to expect a little lighting.
Is there any regulation to the lights, Larry?
Um, the only regulation is the foot candles spread over the property line. But I just gave a copy of the Dark Sky compliant guidelines to Darlene's friend. So they can use that as a guideline. They've already picked out one fixture that, you know, basically spreads one foot candle about 10 feet, which is why when you've got about a 10 or 12 foot wide driveway, that fixture works in that location. And it works along the front door.
Will you be okay with 24/7 lights?
You know, from a safety standpoint, the nature of the business, and I think, I think you need lights on in the area, and I think it's beneficial for the safety of the building and its occupants and the people around it that it be lit 24/7. I understand the neighbor's concern, but if the lights meet code-
Right.
I think it's better for the safety of business.
I mean, the existing lights, we, are purported to not meet code, so we're asking them to put up lights that do meet code, and we thank you for agreeing to that stipulation. So-
Yeah, the lights will be turned off during the day. There's no point in having them on, so it's not really a 24/7. It's a-
Well, yes.
Twelve, twelve-seven.
Okay. Does the, the lights that you, that you chose, do they have directional stuff on them, or are they, they look like they're just a straight shot? I know that some of them can have-
I believe they're, they're a downlight. There's no directional to them, but.
So they can't guard the front of it?
Well, it's a down, downlight.
Yeah, it's got a diffuser along the side, so there's going to be, the reason is that diffuser is so that the light will come out the sides too.
Well, the photometrics kind of show a pretty even round distribution. I mean, it's obviously going to be cut off by the building. All right. I'm okay with it then.
It eats the heck out of a metal halide. Those things hurt your eyes.
All right, I think we're looking at a unlisted neg deck for the seeker determination.
Peter, I still got a quick question.
Oh.
At the workshop, we talked about the sign. Is that staying? And is that lighted? I can't recall.
Um, I, my understanding is the sign requires a different permit as well when that comes, and that would go in the front. I think we did move it based, someone had a suggestion of moving it back, and I, and we did move it back on the drawing. And I would imagine that there'd probably be a small light there, a small sign light directly pointing at the sign, and that would be a permit. I'm sure that's a whole process too.
So I guess, so I guess my question is, since the sign's still on the drawing, are we approving that?
Well, I mean, we're, the location is shown, the sign has to be compliant with the sign code. If there's any deviations to the sign code, then there would be a zoning variance associated with it.
Right. You're approving the concept that they will have a sign, not, your approval does not necessarily locate it there.
Um, I'll do seeker if you want.
Sure.
Are you all set? Bernie or?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Matter of PB 1308-3, and the matter of seeker, I move that it's an unlisted action, negative declaration.
I'll second that, but I would like the modifications to be made internally.
I have modified the form.
Good.
I will attach it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries?
No, that's just the seeker. One more thing.
No, you're not done yet.
Uh-oh.
We're close.
You're very close.
Do we have to re, I can do the, I'll do the motion if you want on this too, if you want.
Right, let me just, before we start, I think the two things that I have are replace all lights with new exterior lights as per submitted. Fixer cut? And remove the street junipers, use only grass at the curb plantings?
Yep.
I don't know that, I mean, the ramp is shown on the plan, the technical details need to be worked out for code compliance.
Per building department.
What's that?
The handicap ramp.
Yeah. All right, you don't, we don't need to do anything with that then?
No, I mean, to me, that's shown, I mean, whether it's this long or that long.
And do we still need to move the light from one side of the, we still need to move the light to the other side of the door, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, or a different light.
That's the rear light over the-
Yep, the rear light that's right near the property line.
Is it? It's ELT-1 then?
Yes.
Well, there's two ELT-1s.
Yeah, there's one.
I'm just saying relocate the rear main door light away from property line.
Right. The, the one, the other one is by the front door, and that's fine.
Sorry, Peter, relocate what rear?
I'm saying relocate rear main door light away, and I said five foot minimum from property line.
Let's see, yeah.
Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, the matter of PB 1308-3, matter of request by Darlene Brewster for preliminary site, final site plan approval to convert the existing building into an upscale wine and liquor store with related site improvements on premises 4441 Culver Road in the Seac Commercial District. I move approval with the following conditions. Number one, replace all building lights with, outdoor lights with new lights per the submitted proposed lights. Number two is relocate the rear main door light a minimum of five feet from the property line, so the spillover does not meets code, the light spillover meets code. And three is remove the junipers from the street landscaping.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
She's not quite done.
I'm done. I'm fine.
When are you opening?
Um, I'm hoping October, or October, early November. Yep. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for investing in around the coin. All right. We've got meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can we just start banging through these or?
Yep.
I move approval of the workshop meeting from January 14th, 2003.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, let's see who was.
I'm sorry.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you.
Which, February, wait, we're doing-
January 14th.
He said January 14th, Chairman.
Yes.
The workshop meeting.
So present were Wayne or Block, McDonald, Palermo, Plukas, Richie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, the actual planning board meeting of January 28th, I move approval of the minutes.
I second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't I have?
No, I wasn't. I may have been absent-minded, but I was actually here.
Second that.
Why don't I have the January?
There's no motion.
Oh, here's. I got it now. All those in, so present were Wayne or Block, McDonald, Palermo, Richie, Plukas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approve. All right, let me, I wasn't at the workshop on the, so I can't do anything with that one.
I would move approval on February 11th, Mr. Chairman, for the workshop many, meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
So present were Wayne or McDonald, Palermo, Plukas. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. And I abstain and Mr. Block abstains too.
I abstain. Um, Mr. Chairman, on the work, the planning board meeting from February 25th, um-
March 25th, Mr. Richie?
February 25th.
February 25th.
Um, I move there's a, there's a, a amend, I want to amend the, the meeting minutes. Case PB 1302-2, I actually voted no on that particular item, so I just want to let the record show that I voted no.
Mm, 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 mm. Carried six, wait.
Five.
Five A, but did you, what about the seeker? Did you vote in favor of seeker?
Yeah.
So we got five A, one-
No A from Jay.
Nay.
And other than that, I move approval of the minutes.
I thought you were really in favor of that one, Jay.
Nope, I recall it.
I recall that as well.
I'll second them.
All those in favor or do we?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, next.
Uh, the next one I have is March 25th.
Yep.
And I move approval of the minutes from March 25th, planning board meeting.
Second.
Present were Wayne or Block, McDonald, Richie, Plukas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. Over there.
Say so. March 25th? Did you say March 25th?
Yeah. Oh, I'm reading.
March 25th, no. Michael was not there.
Incorrectly. April 8th.
I move approval.
I would move approval with one condition that, um, seeker determined after board discussion, a motion by board member, Mr. Plukas's name is misspelled.
Environment will spell wrong too.
I'm sorry, yes, it is. Forgive me.
I still move approval. I like that spelling better of Plukas anyway.
With those corrections, I would second approval.
Where, oh, Enviro, Envirup.
I think that's two S's.
Okay. Those all caps spell checks will get you every time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There was a second before I said that, right?
A second.
Yes, okay.
With, with revision condition.
Yes, I've modified it, yes, yep. All right, we've got June 10th. All right, I'll move approval of those minutes as well, of the June 10th workshop.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Yep, Bernie out. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes from the planning board meeting of June 24th, 2013.
On the June 24th, under the public input, the first member of the community that spoke was John Blackwood.
I would second that with the conditions stipulated.
Or corrections, excuse me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us up to June.
Nice job catching up with those.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you in here.
Not necessary.
Given that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.